All right. Good evening, everybody. Despite what the clock on the wall says, it is six o'clock, so I will go ahead and call us to order for our October 24th, 2023 meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Glad to see a good crowd here tonight. We've got several things on the agenda, so we'll go ahead and jump into council comments.
I just wanted to take a moment. I know many in this room, probably everyone in this room, has seen the news. Last week, Abingdon lost a firefighter in the line of duty. Twenty-year-old Cameron Craig was serving his community, was doing something he loved, and unfortunately did not make it back home after the call. So I just, just hope that we can all keep, keep Abingdon the town, keep our firefighting community, and keep his, his family as well in our prayers. I don't know if y'all are praying folks or not, but we just, thoughts and prayers definitely go a long ways. I've, I've had the chance to, to speak to a few folks connected to him, those fire departments, family. It's definitely a, not an easy, easy thing to, to deal with at any level, but being a twenty, twenty-year-old definitely hits, hits hard. So just keep them in your prayers, keep them in your thoughts, and just, if you see a firefighter, see someone that works in emergency services, thank them. If you're the hugging type, give them a big hug, say thank you, and just show your appreciation.
We've got an event coming up on Thursday. Would like to invite everybody to the train station for the Comprehensive Plan inaugural meeting. We're going to, well, inaugural as far as the public meetings go. They've been working on this for some time, but this is our first chance as a community to get involved, and would like to invite everybody out there Thursday evening at the train station, see what their proposals are, see what comments that we may be able to offer to help the plan as they work on developing it. Because this is, basically, it will reflect the direction that we as a community want to see the city progress over the next five, 10, 20, 50 years. Then this will get revisited again as we go on to see how we've progressed against our plan and what changes we might need to make in future plan. And it, it's a great way for people to be involved, and I would like to invite everybody to come out on Thursday.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
And I'll just, a couple other events I'll highlight. Tomorrow is, the Bristol Hotel is hosting their five-year anniversary celebration, which I think is five o'clock, I believe. It might be 5:30. You know, check their, check their website. And then Saturday, the 28th, there's a full day of Halloween festivities going on town. The hotel's at six. Hotel's at six. Saturday, there's a whole slate of activities going on downtown for Halloween, culminating in the first-ever Halloween parade in Bristol. So come out, wear your costume. If you've got kids, bring them and load them up on candy, and everybody will have a good time. City managers' comments.
Yeah, council, just a few comments. Just to follow up on what some of y'all have said, there is the Comprehensive Plan Workshop on Thursday, October 26th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the train station. Monster Bash Activities, which is being sponsored by Believe in Bristol for Halloween in downtown Bristol, is on Saturday, October 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. There'll be pumpkin decorating, trick-or-treating, a costume contest, and then the first Halloween parade. We also have Trunk or Treat that is sponsored by Bristol Redevelopment Housing Authority will be on Monday, October 30th, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. in the Rice Terrace parking lot. Also, on October 31st, which is Halloween night, the Bristol, Virginia Police Department will host its annual Trunk or Treat, and that is from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. in the parking lot behind the City Hall in the Police Department. And both the Bristol, Virginia Sheriff's Office and the Bristol, Virginia Police Department are accepting candy donations for these Halloween events. Last, but definitely not least, I want to say congratulations to the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department on being selected for this year's Southwest Virginia EMS Council Regional Award for Outstanding EMS Agency. The award recognizes the efforts of many Bristol, Bristol Fire Department members who participate in active shooter training and exercises, the Stop the Bleed Program, CPR, AED, Narcan classes, and many other public education activities that are geared toward making Bristol a safer community. So congratulations to our fire department. And lastly, as Mr. Holmes stated, we need to keep the town of Abingdon and Craig, Cameron Craig's family in our thoughts and prayers during these difficult times.
All right. Thank you very much. Adoption of the agenda. Looking for a motion and a second to take action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt our agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Farnham, second from the Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nade?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Item one, a resolution to celebrate 10 years of communities and schools involvement in Bristol, Virginia public schools. Nobody has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, this resolution celebrates 10 years of communities and schools involvement in Bristol, Virginia public schools. Communities and schools of Appalachian Highlands is a nonprofit organization located in Bristol, Virginia, working to support students and families across Northeast Tennessee and Southwest Virginia, collectively known as Appalachian Highlands Region. With roots dating back to 2013 in Bristol, Virginia, Communities and Schools Appalachian Highlands built a strong foundation in the community and continues to surround students with a community of support, empowering students to stay in school and achieve in life by placing student support coordinators inside the school buildings. Communities and Schools is able to remove barriers, provide support, and ensure students are successful both in and out of school. Throughout the past 10 years, Communities and Schools has experienced tremendous growth driven by both the needs and support from our communities. Communities and Schools has grown from supporting one school within Bristol, Virginia public schools to now supporting 64 schools across 11 school divisions in Northeast Tennessee and Southwest Virginia. During the current 2023-2024 school year, Communities and Schools will support over 23,000 students with 2,900 students receiving individualized support. In Bristol, Virginia, those numbers are 1,900 students with 350 students receiving individualized support.
All right. Thank you very much. Reading the resolution.
A resolution to celebrate 10 years of communities and schools involvement in Bristol, Virginia public schools, whereas the future success of our state and city depends on, upon supporting every child to reach their full potential, and whereas the City of Bristol, Virginia recognizes that young people need a solid foundation to nurture them as they learn and grow to become productive and caring Bristolians. And whereas excellence in education is vital to the success of our city and in Bristol, Virginia, we seek to instill each child with a good education. And whereas Communities and Schools of Appalachian Highlands is a nonprofit organization located in Bristol, Virginia, working to support students and families across, across Northeast Tennessee and Southwest Virginia, collectively known as the Appalachian Highlands Region. Whereas 10 years ago in Bristol, Virginia, Communities and Schools built a strong foundation in the community and continues to surround students with community support, empowering students to stay in school and achieve in life. And whereas Communities and Schools by placing student support coordinators inside the school building can remove barriers, provide support, and ensure students are both successful both in and out of school. And whereas Communities and Schools has grown from supporting one school within Bristol, Virginia public schools to now supporting 64 schools across 11 school divisions in Northeast Tennessee and Southwest Virginia. And whereas during the current 2023-2024 school year, Communities and Schools will support 25,000 students with 3,000 students receiving individualized support. In Bristol, Virginia Community and Schools, in Bristol, Virginia Communities and Schools will support 1,900 students with 350 students receiving individualized support. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Bristol, Virginia does hereby recognize Community and Schools for their 10 years of involvement in Bristol, Virginia public schools and their continued support of the students in our community.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
I move the passage of the resolution.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Holmes, second from Mr. Pollard. I know we have several people from the school system and the school board here. If any of y'all would like to speak before we get into our discussion, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you, Mayor Osborne, and counsel. I would just say that Communities and Schools has been a really good fit for us when they come on board 10 years ago. Our students needed so many services that, that we weren't able to offer at the time. They put beds in homes, gotten families out of, out of motels where they were living, clean clothes, numerous things that need to be taken care of first before you can even educate a child. So it's been a really good partnership. You know, they're, they're centered in our central office, but they, they are serving Southwest Virginia and, and Northeast Tennessee now. So thank you for recognizing them. It's been a great, great partnership.
Thank you. And I believe Chase Stewart is here with Communities and Schools if you'd like to talk for a moment.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just wanted to say thank you for recognizing Communities and Schools of Appalachian Highlands, formerly CIS of Southwest Virginia, for our work in Bristol. And as you said in the document, it all started here. You know, we are centered in Bristol, Virginia, and will continue to supporting our students here. But because of the impact we've had here, we've been able to support more students. We have a lot of work still to do to support all of our students, but we really appreciate the recognition and the support. That's what makes it happen, and that's what makes it possible. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and open it up to council discussion.
I'll just say thank you to Chase and to the Bristol, Virginia School Board, and really all the staff that works in community and schools. I know I follow the group and a lot of them on Facebook, and I see all the things that they're doing to impact our community, not only here in Bristol, but throughout the region. So heartfelt thank you for all the work that you all do. It's much needed, and we certainly appreciate it.
I want to jump in here and just say, I, I think Chase and his team, they do a phenomenal job. Just look at the numbers here. 10 years ago, they started in one school. They're at 64 schools now. Next year, I can't fathom how many schools you'll be in. Challenge to you, Chase. I will say, I'm, I'm on his board, so I can say that. I appreciate, I appreciate getting to see what they do. They, as Chairman Alvis said, they, they really get kids to the point where they can learn, they can focus in the, the classroom, they give them the supports they need to, to, just, just to learn. So it, it's phenomenal the work they do, the impact they have. Seeing it firsthand on the board is cool, but it's also great seeing it out in the community. You see kids in those sweatshirts that you guys get on. Just, the, the impact you have is monumental. Thank you for the 10 years of service. Thank you for the future service. You're not the type to just be happy with where you're at. You want to grow, you want to do more, you want to impact more kids. So thank you for what you do.
We regularly recognize that many of our teachers, seeing needs, they try to help their kids, making sure that kids have clothes and food and school supplies. And a lot of times, some people will complain that teachers shouldn't have to pay for a lot of those things, that the school should be paying for them. But it's not, a lot of those things aren't really for the school to pay for either, but the kids need them. Communities and Schools is filling a lot of those gaps, and I really appreciate what you're doing, because when you help those, you're not only helping the kids, and you are very much, you're helping their families, and you're taking a lot of these other responsibilities off of the teachers so that they can focus on teaching. We really appreciate our teachers, but they need to be able to focus on, on doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that's teaching the kids. And Communities and Schools is helping to take a lot of that load off of them, and helping meet those needs that, in some cases, parents aren't willing to do, in some cases, parents aren't able to do. Of course, the situations are as varied as the people involved. So we just really appreciate what you're doing.
Well, I'll just say, you know, I have, I'm fortunate enough that my sister is one of the, one of the student support coordinators in one of the city schools, and I've been fortunate to see up close the, the commitment that those people who work in the schools have to doing things for the students and putting them in a place where they're, where they're set up for success. And that is incredibly important. It's incredibly important work you all do, not just now in Bristol, but, but across Southwest Virginia and Northeast Tennessee. And it's a big deal. You know, it, it makes a true difference in the lives of a whole lot of students. And, and we're very appreciative for everything that Communities and Schools does and for the partnership they have with, with our city school system. And after we do our vote, if y'all will come down, I've got your proclamation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nade?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Next item is a presentation from Ballad Health. I think the introduction from city manager.
Yeah, we have John Jeter here from Ballad Health to give you an update on what Ballad's doing in their community.
Thank you. All right.
Counsel, thank you all for having us this evening. We're honored to be here. We do have a presentation we'd like to share. Randy, are you gonna click through?
It's all, you need to hear it.
I don't have a clicker, but, oh, thank you, sir. Yeah, my name is John Jeter. I'm the CEO at Bristol Regional Medical Center and Johnson Memorial Hospital up in Abingdon. We're, we're really honored to be here this evening. I think the last time we were here was back in January, and we have a number of updates we wanted to share with you this evening. Since the last time we met, we've received a number of accolades at Bristol Regional Medical Center, both from U.S. News and World Report, as well as Care Checks. And there's a lot of stuff up there, and it's microscopic. You'd, you'd have to take a look at each and every one of those awards. And we're very, very proud of the work that we've done at Bristol Regional Medical Center around the quality of care that we provide. We take a lot of pride and responsibility in the quality of care that we provide at Bristol Regional Medical Center. And despite many of these accolades that we've seen, we're often challenged. Well, why aren't you more like such-and-such facility? Or you, you really need to look at some of these other facilities. And we take our responsibility serious. So we do look at many other hospital companies and try to benchmark ourselves against some of those companies. We wanted to share a few key metrics that we have here this evening. We're, we're very focused on excellence. We're often told we need to look like other facilities. And so this, this information is the most recently available information. It's dated FY 2022 from Medicare Hospital Compare website. And this first metric we have is around patients who leave the ER without being seen by a physician. This is a very key metric for our system and our healthcare delivery, where these are folks who have come to our community hospitals or tertiary care facilities seeking care, believing they need care, but they left without actually being seen by a physician. It creates a lot of risk on our organization, and it's not great care. The national average is 3%. There at BRMC, you'll see, we are setting at 3%. A few other healthcare industries or healthcare facilities that we're often asked to compare ourselves to, such as UT Medical Center, they're at 3%. Vanderbilt is setting at 4%. UVA is at 8%, Corillian at 3%. The Cleveland Clinic, one of the best hospital providers in the country, is setting at 4%. You'll, you'll see a few others up there, UT Medical Center. These are, I, I will say in, at Bristol, for FY 23, we're down to 2%. So we've continued to see some improvement just in the last year around that. Another key metric we look at is how long it takes from a patient that presents in our ER to get discharged. And you will see here, the national average is 207. Bristol Regional, we were at 223. We're actually down to about 215 minutes for this most recent year. You will see a few of these other hospitals up there, UT Medical Center, Vanderbilt. We're significantly below those facilities that we're often asked to compare ourselves from. Also, the percentage of patients who receive the appropriate care for severe sepsis and shock. Sepsis is a deadly condition. It's something that oftentimes is certainly a, a fatal condition, and it often presents in ways that people don't expect. And you'll see the national average is 58%. You'll see here at Ballad, we're below that. Our, our performance at 47%, 49% at JCMC isn't where we want to be. And so we're continuing to kind of work on that. In this particular case, higher is better. And you'll see that although we're not where we want to be, and we're continuing to work to improve that performance, we are still better than many of those other facilities that we're often asked to compare ourselves to. Another one, and I think, I hope that everyone here is, is, is proud of this, percentage of patients who come in the ER with stroke symptoms who receive brain scan results within 45 minutes to arrival. You'll see the national average is 69. These are, these are percentages. At Bristol Regional, 92% of our patients receive that standard of care, which is outstanding results. The Cleveland Clinic is just a little higher than us, but we're better than Knoxville and Vanderbilt, and better than the national average. So we're very, very proud of all that. I, I say all that to say, you know, these are great quality results, but you may say, well, John, gee, I hear what you're saying. I see all these care checks results, the, the, the great accolades on quality, but, but I also have heard that Bristol is a one-star Medicare hospital, and that's also true. I don't want to retread a lot of the ground. Dave McKee wrote an excellent article about the star ratings and would encourage you to read through the star rating information that Dave wrote. He did a great job. But one thing I will say about the Medicare star rating is it is not just based on quality. It is highly dependent on patient experience scores through surveys that are issued to our patients. And this is a place where we have tremendous opportunity at Bristol Regional Medical Center and across Ballad. We have a lot of opportunity to improve patient experience at our facility. And again, we take that responsibility super seriously. One way that we are working to improve patient experience, I believe, is, that's critical, is to improve the quality of workforce that we have. We have a great clinical team at Bristol Regional and throughout Ballad, but as you all know, we've had very high turnover. We have had a lot of staff that are contract labor coming from other areas that are here temporarily to work. The last time we were here back in January, I shared a lot of detail about what Ballad was doing to try to improve its retention rate. I think before you can stabilize your workforce, you must improve retention of your workforce. And so I want to turn it over to Chris Miller, who is our Chief Operating Officer and Administrator at Bristol Regional Medical Center. I'm going to ask him to share some of our recent turnover results with you guys, so you can see some of the work that we're doing on that front.
Chris? Thanks, John. Thanks for having me this evening. Again, my name's Chris Moore. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Bristol Regional. I do, to John's point, want to cover some of our, our turnover data, because again, some of the results that you saw is only secondary to the quality of the team that we have, because we can't, I was in a, our stroke committee meeting this afternoon, looking at some of the data points around our stroke measures that we continue to drive improvement on, though we're, as you can see from the metric, they're very successful in that regard, but we always want to be better. When it comes to turnover, as you can see, and, and I'll, I'll qualify kind of our, our fiscal years. If you look at the top line, the orange line, that's FY 22 for us, which would have began in July of, of 2021 and carried on until June of 2022. That's in the height of the pandemic. We were just experiencing tremendous pressure on the healthcare team. But as you can imagine, experiencing turnover rates of almost one in four was, was very impactful to the care we were delivering to the community, for our ability to function well as, as a hospital, as a health system. And this wasn't unique to Bristol Regional. We were seeing this across the U.S. in large regard, but it was very challenging for us. If you fast forward and go to the next fiscal year, which would be July of '22 through just this past June of '23, we, we stabilized that by almost half. And you can see the target line there is around 19%. Our, our goal is to stay under that national average, and we, we, we cut our, our rate of turnover almost in half. And you can see the first three months there of our current fiscal year that we've maintained that, that same run rate. That, that helps us in a very large degree to alleviate some of the pressures of the contract labor pieces that we see, which at the end of the day are not team members from our community that are here to serve our community, and we would rather that be folks here local. So we've, and we've done this through a number of mechanisms. Obviously, there's things we do around pay increases and these sorts of things, but I will say, we've put a tremendous amount of energy into being at the elbow of our team, trying to understand what they're dealing with. John and I are both round very frequently. Ballad has an affinity program we do for our team members that, that we serve our families. We do a number of events for, just to build that camaraderie within our team that we know will foster turnover rates, improvement there. And then, you know, if you then look at our all turnover, so this is just benefited RNs. I should have shared that. So that's our nursing staff, and, and you can think of that as the full-time nursing staff. When you look at our all team member turnover, and this is important because our all team member turnover directly impacts our bedside caregivers, our RNs, because these are the support staff in larger guard that would, maybe they're the imaging folks, the, the transport team, all the different disciplines that support our nursing team, pharmacy, lab, imaging. As you can see, it's a similar story here. As we were in the height of the pandemic, we were seeing turnover rates of, somewhere upwards of 40%, but different in the high 30s. And that is highly unsustainable to be able to, to have a workforce that, that can navigate the headwinds we're seeing during the pandemic. As that began to subside, and we put a lot of the same energy, whether it was the pay increases, the FENDI programs, the, the rounding, the things that we were doing to try and get at the hearts of our team members, we saw that come down almost in half, as you can see there. And then we're very proud of our recent results. Again, our, our target there is around 22%. Some of these positions naturally have some turnover to them related to, you know, looking for different options in terms of growth and development, but we, we strive to stay under that 22% number. In the first three months of this fiscal year, we've maintained below that 20%. So we're very proud of that, and it's really changing the, the landscape of what we're facing, particularly post, post-pandemic, as we serve the community. Want to jump, and kind of switch gears a little bit and talk about, because secondary to our, our team members, which are the backbone of all the quality work we do, is really the technology and innovation we provide to them to, to deliver the care that we deliver to the community. I have the privilege of working very intricately with our surgical services team, and, and something our, most, most of our community are not aware of is that Bristol Regional is the hub for robotic surgery within the Ballad Health system. And so while we may not do some of the complex trauma and these sorts of things that we've seen in some of the other hospitals, we do a tremendous amount of robotic surgery. And I'll, I'll kind of focus on one piece of, of technology here, but I want to highlight these three units. The one on the left is the DaVinci Excise Surgical Platform. That's a fully robotic surgery system that's minimally invasive. So I'll get into a little more detail on that one in the next slide, but we do a number of general surgery procedures, and more and more of what we're seeing is a shift from fully open or laparoscopic procedures to minimally invasive robotic procedures. And I'll give some more color to that in just a moment. But we serve that in general surgery, urology, gynecology, and also in thoracic. So a lot of our lung procedures, we'll actually do on, on our robot. The device in the middle, that piece of technology, while the first one is, is fully robotic surgery, the next two are what we call robotic assisted. So that's our Striker Mako platform. Bristol does a, a large number of knee and hip replacement procedures. We primarily use this technology for our knee replacement procedures. And what happens here is the surgeon plans the procedure in their office using CT guided imagery. That's loaded into that, that machine. And you see the handle there on top of the unit as the, when the patient is prepped for surgery, there's basically these arrays, these little surgical or satellite-looking dish arrays that are placed on the, on the leg. And that helps the, the robot align with the plane that the surgeon wants to approach for the, for the precise fit of those, those knee replacements, right? So the, the, the... So the various joints that were placed on the knee socket. So the surgeon drives the whole time. He's fully in control of that, but it helps him deliver that in a more precise manner. So very proud of that technology. And the last one, there's our Globus Excelsis GPS system. That is primarily used for spine, and it's very similar to the Striker Mako in that the procedure is planned out in the surgeon's office, and as they're placing the cages around the spine to maybe deal with fusions and those sorts of things, it allows for very, very, within millimeter placement of the screws, which often can be the challenges when you're putting that hardware on someone's spine to correct a spine issue. Another really unique thing about that hardware, as soon as the FDA approved the use of this for cranial, Bristol Regional was actually the site of the first tumor biopsy that was done using this technology in the entire United States. And it's a little hard to imagine, but that piece of equipment was able to biopsy a brain concern through a hole that typically is about twelve millimeters, so, you know, somewhat double the size of a pencil, through a hole that was half the size of a pencil, which was around three and a half millimeters. So it was a very successful procedure, and if you can imagine the invasiveness of a brain procedure to do a biopsy in your brain, that's incredible technology. All of those pieces of equipment represent about a seven million dollar investment in the community. I do want to talk a little bit more about our DaVinci platform. So it is fully robotic in that if you look at the image on the left, the surgeon is actually sitting in a console and drive the device using finger dynamics and a foot control pedal, while the robot is on the other side of the room, placed in the patient through the very small incisions. This is a largely emerging platform. Bristol's been very, very successful. We by far lead the system in that. And what we've got demonstrated in the graph there is the number of surgical procedures we've done on that model since installation of the DaVinci XI platform. So you can see, we've almost doubled what we did in twenty-twenty-one. Right now, if you come for general surgery, GY and urology procedures, a large number of those are done on the robots. We have three of those units at Bristol Regional. One of those is equipped with a teaching console, which is somewhat depicted here, where the surgeon and the resident, those who are being trained, can actually sit back to back and can drive the unit, and they can teach while they do that. Another really amazing feature of this technology is should a surgeon become challenged in the plane that they're in or the approach, they have the ability to be proctored remotely from another part of the country that a surgeon can remote in and help them navigate the procedure. So it's just, it's incredible technology that is transformative in the way we deliver care, and was a substantial investment by the health system. And I think you'll hear some exciting announcements for that even on our Virginia side very soon. So I wanted to share the results of that and the good work that's being done with our technology. A couple of other things that I'll highlight before I turn it back over to John. Virtual care, urgent care visits are a tremendous asset to our community. Obviously, that can be challenged in logistics for some folks. Ballad has recently launched a virtual urgent care initiative. This is twenty-four seven. There's really two ways to access this, this care. You've got the online quick care model, which, I won't read every bullet point there, but essentially, that's an AI-driven function where you can log on, you can answer a few questions, or do any video required. It qualifies what you're putting in the questionnaire, and it helps narrow down what might be the best approach to your condition. There's a flat thirty-dollar fee for that. And if prescription is needed, we do have medical professionals who can facilitate that. And it's all for twenty-four seven, so it's very efficient, very quick to use. The other option is fully virtual urgent care, which is video-driven. It can be done for a smartphone, tablet, desktop. And it is covered by insurance, but it's got a flat fee of forty-nine dollars. It's also all for twenty-four seven. This is a large asset to our community, and we're very excited to be able to offer that. And again, this is available across the health system. Some of the direction we provide our patients and the community around this is if you're looking for, you know, cold symptoms, heartburn, maybe pink eyes, some of the things we may deal with with children, that online quick care is a great option for that because it's very quick, it's easy to do. And, you know, if you're dealing with more challenging situations, maybe you've got, you know, COPD flare-ups, you've got asthma, you've got back pain, those sort of things, you can log on and use the video because that provides a little more access for the physician to see what you're dealing with and can provide you the direction of your care. But all these are additional technology innovations that we're offering to the community so that we can provide the best possible cares as we seek to serve in a very challenging environment right now when we're talking resource constraints, our robotics, and these virtual options. Really, we expand our bandwidth to be able to serve our community better. We also want to share an update on a very incredible initiative, and I'm going to turn that one back over to John to talk about the Appalachian Highlands Community Dental Center.
I know this is primarily an update around Bristol Regional Medical Center, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention one of the great programs that we have up in Abingdon right now. The Appalachian Highlands Community Dental Center is a dental clinic at the campus up in Abingdon. It is a residency program, an advanced education and general dentistry residency program sponsored by Johnson Memorial Hospital. And so far, just in the last few years, we've seen nearly fifteen thousand patients in southwest Virginia that otherwise wouldn't have had access to care. One of the things that we learned when we merged is that, number one, even though it seems obvious, as somebody that's been in healthcare now for nearly twenty years, oral health and other health are so closely related. And we also found that our hospitals are in a unique position where we can actually sponsor residents for dental programs. And so in partnering with a group of local dentists in Abingdon, we put together this program, and it's become the region's largest adult dental Medicaid clinic. The fifteen previous program graduates that we have, as well as the seven current JMH Ballad dental residents, they're working hard. Their goal, and they tell, they'll tell you every time they talk with you, is to eliminate the need to do the remote dental mission projects in southwest Virginia. That is their goal. They're not there yet, but we are working to expand this clinic. That's what it looks like. That's the address. We're adding an additional, I think, three residents. We're hoping to get up to ten residents total up at that dental clinic. And it's an amazing work that those guys are doing up there, and we're super, super proud of their efforts, and just wanted to share that with you all this evening. Sensitive to time, we'll wrap up our presentation. If you have any questions, happy to try to answer any of those that you may have now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jeter. I'll go ahead and open it up to any questions.
I'll just jump in. The question I had about turnover, and maybe we talked about this a little bit last year, just about like nursing, traveling nurses. It looked like your all's numbers, that maybe that number of turnover is going down.
Yes, sir.
And do you think that's maybe just coming out of the pandemic? Maybe, I don't know if maybe the pandemic caused an increase in nurses traveling, because I'm seeing, seems like a decrease in the real estate career that I work in. It seemed like a few years ago, I was, we were getting calls all the time, traveling nurses that were coming here, and they were looking for a place to rent. But it seems like that amount of calls has gone down significantly. So I'm not seeing that a whole lot. So that sort of aligns with maybe your all's numbers in a way.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. We're working hard to reduce the number of, the reliance on contract labor. Again, to do that, you have to reduce your turnover first and foremost. I think we all saw from the way that the demographic shifts were going, there was a coming nursing shortage nationally, internationally, quite frankly. The pandemic certainly accelerated a lot of that. Not only those that chose to retire, which I think we all knew was going to happen at some point, that happened quicker, but it also created a supply and demand issue. People think that competition for resources is local, and I think in the past, that might have been the case, but it's certainly national. And what it did is it opened up a new market for these contract labor folks that it's almost hard to resist. The financial incentives are just so attractive. What we found at Bristol is even many of those who, and I'm not begrudging their decision, I think they were making personal decisions based on their family, but the travel nursing industry is a very difficult industry. And yeah, you're paid very well, but it is a grind. And we've seen many of our nurses that left to go travel, they've actually returned now to Bristol or to other parts of our system. I think they realized that the industry isn't what it was even two years ago. So we're seeing some improvement there as well.
I don't have a question. I just have a couple of comments. I just wanted to say first, thank you to you, John, and Chris for being here tonight to share this information, because I think a lot of times, unless you're, I serve on the community board for Ballad Health and our Bristol Regional Medical, and I'm so happy to be on that board, because I get to see this data each week and hear from you all on everything that you're doing. But I think for the general public, it's extremely important that they're hearing, you know, everything that's going on, and all the services that we have, that we're very fortunate to have this type of healthcare here in our city. So thank you all for the presentation. And I know how hard that you work in constantly striving to improve patient care, and you're always working hard to do that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. So I want to highlight the good stuff first.
Yeah.
I think the dental program you're offering is fantastic. I think that's very important for our region. As you said, dental care ties right into whole-body care. And, you know, if you get an abscess too, that you get an infection, it spreads, you're in the hospital. So very important. And as we all know, with RAM, that is something that we have struggled with in our area, so I appreciate that. I do want to ask you a couple of things. What is the pay range for hiring in a RN at Bristol?
Yeah, right off the top of my head, Chris. Yeah, twenty-two, twenty-five, entry level, new graduate.
I know you have a significant sign-on bonus for nurses.
Yeah, we do. That's absolutely true.
So what is the, of your full RN complement at Bristol currently, what is the breakdown of Ballad employees as opposed to contract employees?
So currently, most of our day shift is actually employed. It's night shift that we're struggling with, and that's where you will find most of your contract. I don't know that I've seen, it changes literally week to week. I don't know if I've seen it this week. Have you, Chris?
So the contract number runs thirteen weeks, so it varies on the special team. So the ICDU is different than the medical surgical company. There's seven units that could be as high as fifteen to twenty percent, and there's five percent, I can say, the surgical services, you know, about sixty employees, and only five that are regular. So it varies from one to four.
So you're saying that in some departments, it might be fifteen or twenty. So you're saying eighty to eighty-five percent of your RN employees are Ballad employees?
At this point.
So those turnover numbers, that is specifically just for?
Bristol Regional.
Bristol Ballad employees, not travel nurses.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. One thing I would like to ask you about, there was a study published very recently by MIT Sloan Review, Sloan Management Review of the top two hundred healthcare companies in the United States based on employee satisfaction. I think Ballad came in at one fifty-eight out of two hundred. And mostly, it was tied to compensation. It had some other stuff, you know, workplace culture, senior leadership, those types of things, but a lot of it was tied to compensation. So how was your pay scale comparative to some of the other facilities that you mentioned, like UT Knoxville, Corillian? What is the pay scale comparison?
Well, let me start with that study that was, I think, published on Friday, perhaps. I think we were ranked number one fifty-six. It was a fascinating article that I saw in that, you know, there are over four thousand hospitals in the United States today. They chose to look at two hundred hospitals slash health systems, and then the article I saw cut the number to one fifty-six so that they could indicate Ballad is last place. That was the article that I saw, which I found fascinating. Also, the data source for that work was an organization called Glass Door, and I don't want to give them any more publicity than I'm already giving them, but I would encourage you to look at Glass Door to determine the veracity of the data in which they used to produce said study. That all being said, are we comparable to your specific question on the compensation? No, we are regularly below comp on most of those other areas, primarily because we're also below, we're not paid the same as those other areas. There's a wage index that helps drive the payment that facilities receive for the services they provide, and we are in one of the very lowest, if not the lowest, in the country here. So it is very difficult to compete from a wage standpoint with all those larger metropolitan areas that we compare to.
So when you, when you look at, you know, we're comparing to Corillian, we're comparing to UT Knoxville, to other things, how do you, how do you counter that? How do you, because they seem to think that compensation is issue. And I know, you know, qualms about Glass Door, it's usually a reliable source. How do you, how do you counter that as an issue? If they're all saying that compensation is a problem, and that's why you have contract nurses, because you have vacancies, because the Ballad nurses are leaving for better pay, how do you, how do you fix that in a reasonable way?
Yeah, it's a great question. What we have worked to do, and I think, again, not to retread everything we covered in January, but we have made significant compensation adjustments, for starters. That has all happened. But we're also looking at other areas to augment. Chris mentioned the affinity program we have to support families. I don't know of many other ones out there like that. We are, we have made a major financial commitment around improving childcare access throughout our community. Thursday, there's going to be a major announcement up in Abingdon, around a three hundred childcare site up there that Ballad will be a major part of. So we're looking for ways to augment beyond just compensation, to your point, Mayor Osborne. I will say that comp remains a concern. We're behind-market on many areas, and in a two billion dollar system, you're constantly looking for ways to prioritize where you invest your dollars in the workforce. I mean, we are a service organization, so our workforce is the most important asset we have.
So I know that, you know, other hospitals in the ballot system pay significantly less than Bristol. I know that, you know, I just looked it up, you know, the pay scale, the starting rate for Ballad, and Ballad RNs at Marion can be as high as twenty-four, but can be as low as fourteen something an hour. You know, so I don't know how RNs are able to afford, you know, with the cost of everything going up, housing, you know. I don't know how they're able to afford working for Ballad, you know, at rates like that. You know, twenty-one, twenty-two is more reasonable, but, you know, it is a concern. I know that, let me ask you this. What is your, are you meeting staffing goals for RNs, specifically like in the emergency room or?
You say staffing goals. Could you elaborate?
Yeah, staffing goals. The reason I ask, you know, I don't know how many people in here have been to the Bristol emergency room in the past year or two. For lack of a better term, there's a bullpen. If you come in and you're not having an emergent heart attack, stroke, you're put in a big, open area with other patients, you know, just to discuss your personal medical issues in front of everyone else. That implies, I know there's plenty of rooms. Is that because of a lack of nurses to cover all of the rooms, that they're all in one congregate area?
Yeah, so that's a quick care area, and one of the things that we've been working to address at Bristol Regional is to do away with that sort of environment. And it began with not having enough, actually, what it began as is it wasn't an ER nursing concern so much as it was med surge up on the floor, having staff beds. We were holding so many patients in that emergency room that we were trying to care for patients in every available real estate that we had. And so that's what primarily drove the development of that area that you're discussing. In the last several months, I'm going to go back to at least April, we rarely even use that space. We've been able to enhance our throughput sufficiently at Bristol. That's not been an issue.
Have you experienced any issues with, and you kind of touched on a little bit, with getting patients, well, I don't know if the term is processed, but they come into the ER, they're in the ER, they're going to be admitted with extended wait times staying in ER rooms.
We've nearly eliminated that. We've had sporadic incidences over the last two weeks of longer holds due to night shift capacity, you know, nursing. And some of that, again, is reliance on travelers for the night shift coverage, and whether they show up for work or whether we've been able to secure them. I will say that, yeah, in the last two weeks, we've seen some of that pick up at Bristol, but it's been, you know, months since we've had any issues like that.
I don't want you to think that I'm, you know, picking on your bullying Ballad specifically. You know, I know that the nursing shortage is, you know, that's indicative of healthcare across the country. As you said, you know, we've, as you touched on with COVID and with people of the baby boom age beginning to, you know, get older, that's, it's a nationwide issue.
Certainly.
You know, especially in our area, where we have a higher-than-normal population of senior citizens, you know, people getting older. It is a major concern, you know, for us. So I guess my last question to ask you would be, so say, what is your three-year vision for how your nursing levels will be, how you will look in three years at Bristol specifically? for how your nursing levels will be, how you will look in three years at Bristol specifically?
Yeah, so I think it will take us three years to rebuild our ranks without travelers. If you recall, before the pandemic, even after the merger, we were staffed. We did not have travels, travelers. Given the numbers and looking at how many nurses our schools are producing, we're having to rely on new graduates to re-bolster our ranks. And so, I think it's going to take three years just to work out all the travelers out of our facility. But that is our goal from a staffing perspective.
Is your goal to actually be at zero travel nurses?
Absolutely, that is the goal. That is absolutely the goal.
And that's a good aspiration. What is the actual, say, let's say, national average, or maybe you know, or maybe you don't know, for where hospitals are with travel nurses as a percentage of their full staff now?
I don't have an answer for that. Not today.
Okay.
You know, listen, our experience has been, we don't utilize travel nurses.
Yeah.
That's our experience pre-pandemic, so that's where we'd like to get back to. But it's going to take years to achieve that. Just math is going to require years.
The root problem is all these nurses at other hospitals have left and become travel nurses because they get paid so much more.
I think that's part of it, including some of our own.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And they've been able to come back, I guess.
Yeah, some of them have came back.
Well, I appreciate you coming and presenting, you know.
Absolutely.
I'll say, you know, I ask these questions because, you know, I worry about the quality of care that the residents of the city I'm elected to lead receive, and that's my main concern.
We appreciate honest questions.
You know, we want you to be successful. We want to see ballot do well and provide good service. You know, when those concerns arise, it's beneficial for you all to come and talk to us about them, so.
Certainly.
So, we really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't believe so.
All right, thank you all.
We appreciate it. All right, item three, public hearing for the CDBG program year 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPR. I will open the public comment. No one has signed up for public comment, staff report.
Good evening, everybody. Is this working? Yep, okay. So, the city of Bristol is an annual recipient of federal community development block grant funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. The entitlement monies may be spent to develop or sustain viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities, principally benefiting low-to-modern income persons. All entitlement monies received are dispersed through the city's CDBG program. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, better known as the CAPR, for this program is an annual assessment of the city's performance in meeting its priorities and objectives of its five-year consolidated plan and program year annual action plan. This report is being brought before the city council for public comment prior to its submission to HUD, and I have prepared a very brief PowerPoint which summarizes the CDBG activities for the last year. And the period covered is from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. So, we received $269,250 in CDBG entitlement grant funds for the year. $287,202 were spent, which includes some carryover. Eight public service agencies were provided $47,700 to carry out activities benefiting LMI, better known as low-to-modern income individuals and families, leveraging approximately $916,416 to fully operate the programs. And the public service agencies also leveraged a total of $2,731.5 volunteer hours, which were valued at over $86,000. So, annual accomplishments with these funds, we had sixteen homes were rehabbed, three blighted properties were demolished, one hundred and eighty-five uninsured individuals received medical care and prescriptions, one hundred and seventeen individuals received job skills training, and thirty-one were placed in jobs, ninety-nine neglected and/or abused children or provided assistance, one hundred and forty-five homeless individuals received case management services, thirteen chronically homeless men received housing and case management, and thirty-one percent of the total award for the year funded a portion of administration and code enforcement staff salaries. So, a total of six hundred and forty-three low-to-modern income family members were provided direct services through the programming. Eighty percent of these money spent directly benefited LMI. The threshold is seventy percent, and the reason it wasn't higher was because we spent some money on the blighted properties. So, COVID-19, we still have funding available, so CV activities, we received a total of We have spent $181,221.63 to date. $146,186.40 went to public service agencies serving LMI in the city, and there is some remainder in admin and planning. And we do have, let's see, there's a balance of $93,794, and most of this is appropriated. So, we'll hopefully, we're working towards spending it all out. Okay, so one of the more popular and in-demand programs is our emergency home repair program. This year, we spent over $70,000 to benefit our low-to-modern income families and individuals. And I have just a couple of examples here. Here was Sue Drive, and the owner is a senior citizen. She needed a roof replacement, and she also had water damage in the corner of her house. So, both of these were repaired for her. And this was a roof replacement. You can see the old roof and the new roof, and she actually had leaking coming into her house. And this was on Spurgeon Lane. This is another, most of the clients are senior citizens living on fixed incomes. She received a new heat pump. And then on Mary Street, we put in an ADA accessible ramp. So additionally, through the emergency home repair program, the city was able to fix frozen busted water pipes during the cold snap last winter. I believe we did three projects. We replaced two water lines, and we replaced two hot water heaters. And this is my favorite. This is a family, they were gifted this property. It's out off of Island Road. It's a family of five. The husband is, it's a young family. The husband is disabled, and the wife works at Dollar General, for I imagine, pretty close to minimum wage. They first contacted us for a new roof, but as you can see, they needed a little bit more than a new roof. So, they have, they were, became part of the home program that we have. So, we used home funds, and we are building them a brand-new house. It should be ready, they're in the middle of construction now. It's going to cost a total of $161,973. It's going to have two, let's see, four bedrooms and two bathrooms, because they have three small school-aged children. So, anyway, this is one of my favorite uses of some of our funding. And we only have enough home funds to basically do one reconstruction every two years. And that's what we did with the CDBG dollars this year, and are there any questions?
Thank you, Ellen. I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions or comments.
No questions for me, but just to comment, again, going back to the real estate thing I mentioned earlier, we do have a lot of old, older homes that need repair. So, the work that you all have done in these projects, especially things like roofs, water lines, you know, heating and air, that's, it's so important, and it's definitely needed in our community. So, thank you for everything you all do to help get that going.
Absolutely.
I'll just say, first off, thank you for your presentation. I always love hearing about CDBG stuff because it's an opportunity to show that local government can be effective, can do good things for people, and, you know, just, you know, great news on everything. It's wonderful that we're able to help these folks get a brand-new house.
Yeah, it makes a good impact.
It does, and, you know, but, you know, I'm sure that's the big headline takeaway that somebody would take from this, but, you know, just in the, your very initial beginning of your presentation, you're talking about thirteen, you know, chronically unhoused people being able to get housing. I mean, there's a lot of good stuff that happens with CDBG funds, and we really appreciate what you do and appreciate what those funds can do for our city.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Item four, addition of four full-time employees for the Public Works Department.
Council Public Works has requested four additional full-time employees to be funded entirely from state funds. The positions include two machine equipment operators, a traffic technician, and a laborer. These positions will be paid from the state street and highway maintenance funds. These funds are recurring funds, and the estimate for the total cost for fiscal year '24 is $196,000, $196,198.
All right, thank you very much. And no one's signed up for public comment. Looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the addition of the four full-time employees for the Public Works Department as presented.
Second.
All right, motion for Mr. Farnham, second for Mr. Holmes, council discussion.
I was just going to say, I think this is great. I think a lot of times we talk about just things that we need to get done, projects of different types around the city, so, and the guys that are already working, guys and gals, are already basically covered up all day, every day, and they've got a full plate, and to be able to hire a few more, I think it'll definitely help with some things that we need to get done in the city, so it's a good thing.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. I certainly agree with the need for the additional full-time employees. We talk every week about things needed, needing to be done, and we just don't have the staff to do it. So, I think this is really going to play a huge role in that, and I'm glad we were able to find the funding to do this.
Not to belabor the points already made, I just, I'm thankful we're able to do this. Oftentimes, we ask city department, city staff to wear multiple hats, do multiple jobs, and for the same pay, so it's good to be able to hire a few more folks to kind of take on some of this work and tackle these projects, so excited for this.
I'll say, so just to clarify, so was it, you said it was two machine equipment?
Operators.
And then one traffic tech and one general laborer?
Yes.
So, these are VDOT-funded?
Yes.
So, they will only be able to work on VDOT fund, or VDOT reimbursed projects?
That's correct.
So, that will free up regular Public Works employees to work on other stuff that's not VDOT reimbursed?
Yes, but you have, I mean, it's not that easy, so.
Yeah, they're not necessarily trained for?
Right, because a lot of our employees, a lot of our employees in Public Works are paid out of the highway maintenance funds.
Yeah, okay. And it's a recurring cost yearly of about $196?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none?
Actually, real quick, it's more for a full year, this is just the remaining for the rest of this, remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay. So, for the remain, until June of '24 is $196, okay. What will it be roughly for the, for a full year, if you had the ballpark?
We can get those numbers for you. I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Number five, public hearing for supplemental appropriation of $13,971,415. I will open the public hearing. No one signed up for public comment, staff report.
This is a council, this is a public hearing for the proposed supplemental appropriation of $13,971,415. The public hearing was advertised in the October 17th, 2023 edition of the Bristol Herald Courier. The details of the supplemental appropriation include general fund appropriations of $1,988,354. And this consists of police department grants, remaining grant funds for the PSAP, the Next Generation 911 Grant, $263,151. VDOT reimbursed maintenance, carryover of fiscal year '23 unexpended funds, $649,627. Also in VDOT reimbursed maintenance, additional state revenue to be received in fiscal year '24 of $1,075,576. It is requested these funds be used upon for additional Public Works positions, the estimated fiscal year '24 cost of which is $196,198, and that the remaining of $879,378 be used for ongoing highway maintenance costs. Solid waste disposal fund, this is to appropriate proceeds from the general obligation bond anticipation note issuances for the expenditure on solid waste projects and note issuance costs in fiscal year '24, $5,421,476. And this piece appropriates the remaining total note proceeds to be received. The detailed expenditures for each of these solid waste projects may change or be adjusted as the projects are completed. School operating fund, this is an additional appropriation of $6,561,585 to the school operating fund for additional funding received from the Virginia Department of Education. These are grants, and the revenue covers the expenditures, and I would like to note that no additional local monies are included in this appropriation. This brings the total supplemental appropriation to $13,971,415. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phillips. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Item six, supplemental appropriation of $13,971,415. No one signed up for public comment, staff report, do you have anything else you want to say?
Just as staff recommends that you approve the supplemental appropriations listed.
All right, thank you. Looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation of $13,971,415.
Second.
All right, motion from the vice mayor, and second from Mr. Holmes, council discussion. All right, hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right, item seven, approval of memorandum of understanding with the Bristol Public Library.
Counsel, this is a redo of the previous MOU that we had signed with the Bristol Public Library back on March 28th of 2023. This revised MOU has an update to the capital projects section stating that the cost of the capital projects at the main library will be split equally between the cities. The cost of capital projects at the Avoca Branch Library will be paid by Bristol, Tennessee.
All right, thank you very much. Looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
I move the approval of the memorandum of understanding with Bristol Public Library.
Second.
All right, motion for Mr. Holmes, second from the vice mayor, council discussion. All right, hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right, next section is ordinances, second reading, number one, an ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the city of Bristol, Virginia, located on Clear Creek Road. No one has signed up for public comment, staff report.
Counsel, on August 14th, 2023, the city received an unsolicited offer to purchase a city-owned parcel of land located on Clear Creek Road near Wallace Middle School in the city of Bristol, Virginia, map parcel number 141-a-45, pursuant to the Code of Virginia and the City Code of Bristol, Virginia. A notice of the offer and notice of this public hearing was published in the Bristol Herald Courier on August 22nd, 2023, and August 28th, 2023. This is the second reading of that ordinance. We have previously passed it one month ago, in the last meeting in September, I should say.
All right, thank you very much. Looking for a motion in a second for second reading, which can be in full or by caption only.
I move for the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right, for second reading by caption only, motion by the vice mayor, second by Mr. Holmes, council discussion. All right, hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Abstain, I submitted an offer.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right, reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the city of Bristol, Virginia, located on Clear Creek Road, map parcel number 141-a-45.
All right, thank you. Now, we're looking for a motion in a second for adoption of the ordinance.
I move the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, motion for Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Holmes, council discussion. All right, motion for Mr. Holmes, second from the vice mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Epstein.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right, next item is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. We have one person who wants to speak, and that's Reverend Knopfler.
Counsel, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to speak and apologize for being tardy, for coming in. I sent you emails, I'm sorry you got those emails late. I thought that they had went out earlier over the weekend, but I failed to send them. I blame my phone for these things. My name is Jackie Knopfler. I live at 143 MacArthur Circle. After reading the Bristol Herald Courier page article by Emily Ball, putting the Confederacy on a pedestal set in stone, October the 19th, 2023 edition, I am convinced more than ever not to continue remaining silent over the statue that's located across Cumberland Park on Lee Street, straight down the street, across from our Bristol, Virginia school board of all places. While the grass was well cuffed around the grounds where the statue sits, the leaves are even being picked up now at this time as they are falling, bush, public trash picked up on the road, properties needing cleaning off, trees falling and still have fallen along the roadside. I am asking that the statue, which has no purpose other than to hurt the community, the country, post-war healing process to this day, to be moved to its East State Street cemetery where other Confederate soldiers lay. I'm asking that the same manner that it was moved from the train station to the corner of the, all nice and quietly, and now over to the Cumberland spot, I'm asking that it be moved. I don't think we're going to have an issue with it. I don't think we're going to have to go put it on the voting and so forth and see what the community wants to do. Bristol needs to take a stand now and start moving forward on these things and not be known in southwest Virginia as a place where this type of activities can be encouraged. We've looked at it for a long time. We've paid taxes on it for a long time for where it is located. And I ask you to please put it on the agenda, or however that is done for discussion, so that the community can move forward. I mean, front page, open the door, and let's close it finally. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Reverend. Next item is the consent agenda. Looking for a motion in a second.
Mayor, I'm asking that for this, we separate the minutes from October 10th, as I was absent that day.
Okay.
And we need to abstain.
So you want to pull out the October 10th minutes to be voted on separately?
Correct.
Okay, so do you, do you make, are you making a motion to approve the consent agenda except the October 10th?
Actually, we need to do a couple of them.
There was one meeting that I was not here for, and I can't remember if it was October 10th or September 26th.
It was the 10th.
October 10th.
Same day, I was absent. Okay. So we'll pull out that one separately. So the motion is to vote on all the items except for the approval of the minutes for October 10th.
Okay, so that's your motion?
Second.
All right, so motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the October 10th minutes by the vice mayor, second by Mr. Holmes. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Uh, yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes, and now, looking for a motion in a second to approve the minutes from the October 10th city council meeting.
I move the approval of the minutes of the October 10th.
Counsel, I just made a mistake. Anthony, you were absent on the September 26th.
September 26th, okay.
I was looking at the wrong set of minutes.
Okay. So-
That, that motion would pass anyway, based on-
Three.
Right.
So do we want to say that Anthony didn't actually vote on that? Do, do we need a re-vote?
No, he already voted on it, but just for the record, Anthony was not at that October 10th meeting, or at the September 26th meeting. I'm still getting confused.
I was here October 10th.
You were here October 10th.
Okay. So now I've got a motion, I've got a motion to approve the October 10th minutes, and now I need a second.
I'll second that.
I don't think you can second. Can you second that?
He was here.
Am I here currently? Okay, okay, so a motion for Mr. Holmes, second for Mr. Farnham. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Epstein.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
There being no further business, we stay adjourned.